Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Community Redevelopment Agency's regular meeting this sixth day of May, the year 2014. If we'd all rise for the invocation, please.
Evening, everyone. Father, we just come to petition you that you would just take the wisdom that's inside of each one in these meetings, our mayor, the council people, Lord God, together, that you would draw out the wisdom that you've put in each of us and even give us greater wisdom as we come together. So tonight, we just lift up this time, Lord God, and we ask for your wisdom from above to settle in our midst and speak with clarity in the future, Lord God, for things that need to be decided. And we do pray for that wisdom from above, Lord God, that is a pure heart toward you and one another, peaceable, gentlest, willing to yield to one another, Lord God, that won't be hypocrisy, but it'll be peace, sown in peace, Lord God. So we thank you for your presence leading us tonight, in Jesus' name.
If you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, will you call the roll?
Chairwoman Eloise Taylor.
Here.
Vice Chairman Bill Colombo.
Here.
Board Member Steve O'Neill.
Here.
Board Member Nancy Britton.
Here.
Board Member Terrence Rowe.
Here.
City Attorney Joe Public. Let the record show that the attorney, city attorney, is not here. City Manager Tom O'Neill.
Here.
Thank you. The first item is the approval of council minutes for the CRE -- scratch that. The approval of Community Redevelopment Agency minutes for the CRA meeting of April 22nd, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any corrections, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It passes. Any comments from the public? Any comments from members of the board? Okay, then we'll move -- Mr. O'Neill, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, just briefly. I'm planning on being out of the office for a little bit tomorrow afternoon. My daughters graduating are in college tomorrow, so I wanted to attend that.
Congratulations. Great, great, congratulations. All right, let's move on then to the council business. The first is the anti-crime initiative. Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, thank you. This is a continuation of a discussion that the CRA board had on April 1, when you indicated you wished to continue your discussion. So we listed on the agenda for tonight if indeed you would like to allocate additional resources for community policing overtime. You have the ability to do that by virtue of a budget amendment in the CRA budget. So with that, I have no further comment.
Okay. Open this for discussion for council. Ms. Britton?
Yes, yeah, I just wanted to bring it back and, you know, put the money back on the table, just in case, and just get some of your opinion as to how we continue the very first successful community policing that we had, and what is the best direction to go? You know, do we utilize police? Do we just go out with the citizens? Yeah, I want to open it up for discussion and see what some of your thoughts are.
I'll start out. I know that we had discussed this item. If I'm reading this correct, obviously, it's a move to reallocate funding at a future date. Would that be correct?
Yes, it will not involve an overall increase to the budget. It will just reallocate existing line items.
Right. I know Nancy, in the past, has been successful with the signs and things that we have out there, that we still have out there. The anti-crime signs that, I don't know how many there are, but I know there's one, you know, on bay there.
They're not working.
Pardon. But I think they were nice. I mean, you know, does it have an effect? You know, I would think so. But, you know, in looking at the policing overtime, look, none of us are, you know, fans of overtime. I mean, let's face it, it costs more money. But in looking at ideas in this anti-crime initiative or effort, you know, where, I think we asked this before when we had this discussion, where can we get the biggest bang for our buck? And, you know, I think we come back to the chief and ask, basically, or maybe there's some other things that you folks are thinking that we can get a bigger bang. And I'd also just like to have maybe some numbers. We're, you know, into, you know, certainly getting into the midpoint. I don't know about the midpoint of our budget, but, you know, as far as numbers, what have we spent now on overtime? You know, just kind of, you know, throwing that out there. But, you know, look, I think we're all have a commonality there with the anti-crime, and I thank Nancy for bringing it forward, but, you know, in looking to throw $10,000, that it basically was, you know, it wasn't a go last time this went around. So how can we change this? Do we need to add funding? What other ideas are out there?
I just want to take a second, if I could. Officer Koch, I'm sorry to call on you without giving you much notice, but, you know, could you elaborate on what's been done as far as people in the woods that are living there? Have you, as a police officer, or any of the other police officers, had opportunity to go in there and see what's going on? Could you explain that?
There's a variety of areas throughout the city.
Would you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry. Variety of areas throughout the city that have, or in areas where we do get homeless camps quite frequently. Historically, a lot of those areas, we've had trespass authorization from the property owner, and we would go in and have the people vacate and issue trespass authorization from there. But what tends to happen is it's a new crowd that comes back in, they reoccupy it, so it's a revolving cycle where we extricate them from the area, and then they're gone for a while, and they end up coming back in.
How many of those, how many, how many places out there do we not have trespassing paperwork on?
I don't know how we do not. I know the three or four main areas that we regularly go in and do that with, we have had trespass authorization from them. I know we're in the process of going over and double checking the paperwork on the trespassing, trespass authorization, and some of the ownership of the property has changed, so we have to get that redone from the new owner, and you know, from there. So we're actually in the process of double checking all that, just to make sure that we're still current enough to be able to issue any action on it.
Well, you've been around a long time. How can an effort from the community assist the police in Port Ritchie with some of the issues that we have going on? And how can possibly Pastor Lord's group, along with the citizens, assist you?
Well, the citizens in general vigilance. When you see something out of the ordinary, call us, let us go out, let us address it and identify who the people are, what they're doing, why they're doing it, and then go from there. As far as Pastor Lord's group, I actually spoke with him the other day. They're trying to do it from the opposite side of helping the people that want to be helped and getting them to a better situation where they don't have to be where they're at. You're always going to have those that don't want that help, and we then may have to take a more enforcement action than a assistance action.
And you were part of the last operation that we did in order to clean up the web. I think you were around back then.
I was.
And I think you participated in some of those.
I was in that area quite a few times.
So my question is, you know, it was quite harsh, the way we went about that last time, and although effective, very effective. So could you make any suggestions as to how we could have done something better versus what, you know, what would you suggest, what you saw in the past to today?
In that particular setting, it degraded so bad that I think we had to go in.
Do what we did.
Affirmatively and take a sort of action to get them to comply or go.
But in the future, I mean, as a police officer, do you see that there's anything that we could do? Do you think, do you think community policing in groups and getting out and doing what I'm trying to do is effective?
It absolutely can be if the people that you're trying to help want to be helped.
Right.
And like you said, I had a conversation with Pastor Lord the other day, and there are people that they get into situations and they turn to a not-so-righteous path, and, you know, they're doing it because they're in that situation. Those people, those people absolutely, I think, I think can be helped. There are some, though, that choose regardless of the help that anybody provides to continue their path.
That was interesting to me to find out the other day about this whole group of young folks that just don't care to be helped at all. They just want to live there. That really, really surprised me. But anyway, thank you very much. I'm sorry to put you on the spot like that.
Well, can we ask a question, too? Because this maybe goes along with what was noted last time, and I think maybe partly what Nancy had brought up, maybe even in this discussion, was, you know, we're told basically that, you know, folks are coming from other areas because of what's offered here. And, you know, how do we basically address that? I mean, we know that there's, you know, shower areas, there's food areas, there's, you know, things of such. Certainly, we can't discourage folks from helping other folks. But at the same time, you know, if they've left other areas to come here, basically due to what's offered, let's say from Salvation Army, et cetera, you know, how do we best work with that as well also? Because as you're suggesting, you know, while there's going to be some good apples, there may be some bad apples as well that, you know, resist any help at all. And, you know, this is where the, I would think, the anti-crime initiative and the bang for our buck would continue, is that we would address some of these other things and not just throw money at overtime to basically cover those. If these folks come right back, as you've suggested, to a spot that, you know, we're going to feed them, we're going to bathe them, and, but, but go ahead. I know that was part of the discussion.
Well, the only thing I disagree with is that, you know, there are people that do want to be helped, and that's where Pastor Lord comes in. But then again, there's those people that, as you said, Pastor Lord, in many occasions, that if you want to, if you want to be here and seek help, we're here to help, but if you want to not follow the law and whatnot, we don't want you here. We don't, we don't want that. And that's, I think, what we projected with the police and whatnot in the past, and that's how, it is my belief that we were able to basically draw out people that didn't want to be seen, and by coming out on a regular basis and saying, "We know who you are, and we know what you're up to," and they did leave because they didn't want to deal with us. And so, so I think, that's why I think we need to take more of a dual approach. You know, not only have the churches out there, but also have the police with us. So that, you know, and I'm telling you, it only took us two or three weeks to get the word out, you know, that we're not going to tolerate this. And I can tell you that Newport Ritchie is 150% on board to do it there. And if they're doing it over there with their police department, we sure darn well want to do it here because they'll just come here. And then, you know, this is what we've done for years, pass it back to Newport Ritchie. We need to work in conjunction with Newport Ritchie and their citizens and our citizens and really come together. And it's going to take a lot of work, you know, to put this program together. But I know Kim Bogart is willing to work with us, and that's their plan. He is dedicated to turning that city around, and I want to do the same at the same time because we don't want a big mess here. That's why this is important for us to really jump on board, even if it's just, you know, the initial, the initial push, because that just might be enough to see this through and get some action going. You know, because word travels fast in a small town.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I mean, you've got a multitude of things. You know, anti-crime is just one of them. I mean, that's what the agenda item is, the anti-crime initiative, and crime and homelessness are certainly two entirely different things. You know, how, but they tend to work together in an awful lot of times. Anything we do is going to have to be, I've said this before, anything we do is going to have to be done on a multi-jurisdictional scale. It's got to be done with us and Newport Ritchie and the county because it's, it's, it's a regional issue. The, you know, the issues we're talking about do not truly respect political boundaries when you go on the north side of our city there. Whether you're in the city or out of the city, it doesn't make a heck of a lot of difference. So, I mean, I said it last time we were discussing it, I'd like to see discussions between all three jurisdictions to take, you know, a united approach to this, because that's the only way we're ever going to fix it. Because like you said, and like Chief Brown had said at times, they move down the road, they move up the road. They move up the road, they move down the road, you know?
Well, Pasco County has already taken a proactive approach. The sheriff has been really working on cleaning up the streets. I know that if you sit down with the sheriff, he would say the same exact thing. He would say, you know, "We're out to clean up the community," and so on and so forth. So they've been doing this for a while. But Newport Ritchie is so, so close to us and such a, you know, close neighbor, and we just have the kind of desired area because everything's around. The further you push out into the county, the less services are available. You know, we just happen to have all the services, you know, methadone clinic and Salvation Army and all those things that, you know, woods and local to the gas stations and places that they can stand out with their signs and whatnot. So, I mean, I don't see that there's any reason that we can't get the county involved, but I think that we got to start somewhere. And we start with Newport Ritchie and work together there and expand.
Just to, very briefly, I did speak with Councilwoman Judy DeBella Thomas and also Chief Bogart. They had a regular city council meeting. They indicated a desire to be here, but they, of course, had a regular scheduled meeting tonight.
All right. I'm going to open it to the public for input and suggestions. Pastor Lord?
Leonard Lord, I pastor at 8114 Leo Kidd Avenue. We do have some, a group here that actually goes out in the woods, and what I'm seeing as we work together, is you get that word that can go out. And what I see is that maybe us as the church, by reaching out to them, can help you pinpoint those that really are causing trouble and those that really won't help. And so what I'd like to do is, I know we have, I think, Barry and some others here that I think have went out into the camps, Tim. And so if there's anything y'all can say to help with the police department and the council and the decisions, I know their, their heart is to get a hold of them, disciple them, and they're really looking for a place they can take them in and keep them 24/7 and disciple and get them functioning. I know that's what they want, but resources are limited and sore personnel will full time. And so if it would be all right, Mayor, I'd like to ask if they have anything to say hands-on there that you could help. Y'all have heard the discussion. Barry, did you want to say anything? Pastor Eugene, Tim, I know you've been out. Mike's been working, as a matter of fact, he was wanting to be here. He's from Newport Ritchie, works with Tim Bogart, I believe, there in the city. So Barry, if there's something that would enlighten them, and together, there is a scripture. See, we have a group that meets every week in praise, that, "What, God, what are you saying?" In the book of Haggai, there's an interesting thing. It said, "They stirred the governor and the high priest," which is the government and the church, "and with that stirring, there was a remnant of people that began to build the community, and they began to prosper," and things happened. So I believe what we see is happening is that God is stirring some of y'all, the government, with us, the church, that we together can stir up a remnant of people that'll come together to be able to pinpoint how we can help or be able to prosecute and stop those that's, you know, causing trouble in our community. Together, we can do it. So Barry, go ahead, and any others, if that's all right, Mayor.
Yes, fine.
Sure. My name is Barry Benner. I'm with Impact Family Ministries. And I do have a ministry that we do go out, and we actually go out into the woods, and, but we do take food out, but that's only an introduction. That allows us to go into the camps, and then we take time to minister, and we can spend two, three hours in a camp ministering to them. We do have people that are serious about getting help. However, our hands are tied because we don't have the facilities to bring them out, to re-educate them, to minister to them, to train them for a job, and then to bring them back into society. If we had some homes that we could provide housing for them, then we could bring them in, manage them, we could do a complete restoration with them when we have those facilities. We have Impact Family Ministries, we have the ACT Center, we have the TLC, which is a training center, which is not in operation because we need additional facilities to do that. So we're equipped. We would like to retrain them, bring them out of the woods, because being in the woods, staying in the woods, they're going to be who they are now. But when we can pull them out of the woods, get them into a safe environment, into an environment where people oversee them, walk with them, minister to them, re-educate them, get their minds back to where they were before they went into the woods, then we can make them a productive person in society. But we need facilities to do this. We need a couple of homes. If we could get a couple of homes where we can bring them in, have a living facilities for them, then we can do that. But we have, we have a lot of people, and I'll be honest with you, there are people that are nuisance, that really want to get out of the woods. And we, if we can provide a place for them, pull them out of there, because as long as they're in the woods, they're going to drink, they're going to do everything that is destructible. But if we can get them out of the woods, re-educate them, retrain them, train them for a job, help them find a job, and Newport Ritchie, and be honest with you, this isn't even just for the people in the woods. This is for people that are living in a home that is desperate, that is living in darkness, that we need to pull out of the homes that are, that don't have a job, that we can bring into these facilities also and train them. So it's not just limited to homeless. We have other people that are really desperate. We have people come into Impact Family Ministries that don't have food, that have a home, but they don't have food, and they are also desperate. So they really need to be retrained. So I beg you, give us a place, give us the facilities, and you will see change in Pasco County. We pray about it every week for Pasco County to change. And, you know, I even think of the scripture, when Jesus went into Samaria, he was told not to, because it was the most rotten, crime-ridden, drugs, alcohol, prostitution. He went there, and he went to the well where it was Jacob's well, and he sat there because he was exhausted. But the disciples went on to take care, get food for themselves. He ministered to a woman that came to the well, set her free, and went on. That's what we want to do. We want to bring them out. We want to have wells, homes that are wells, that will replenish them, and we can make them a productive person in society. Thank you.
Can't see any faces, but I've been here before, standing in for Pastor Lord. My name is Mike Glass, I live in Newport Ritchie. West Pasco Resource Center is a business that I have, and also minister at Impact in Port Ritchie, and a volunteer instructor with Chaplain Bob Lefler at Pasco County Jail in their FIT program. I have a little bit different perspective about the homeless problem. I was involved when the, last time, with that big camp was a few years ago, out next to Walmart. And when I went out, they were shortly thereafter, tents were slashed, bicycles smashed, which we had provided. And I understand the situation. I've also been in places where in the middle of the night of cold night, both in Newport Ritchie and Port Ritchie, where officers will come through the door and just start calling out names and this type of thing. The last time was during the heavy rain here at Port Ritchie, and they drove up, didn't introduce themselves or anything like that. Now, I know that always happens in an organization, but the problem with the homeless, I see, is not, is not the economy, and it's not with the government. The purpose, number one purpose for law enforcement is deterrence. It's not to be our bodyguard. That's why their presence keeps it down. The problem has been with the faith-based community, and what my impetus has been is get them out. When you have situations out there, like at Walmart, we had a discussion about this last week, I would go in and talk to the manager and say, "This is not a good business for you." When people come up, whether they see a cruiser, police cruiser out here, or see homeless people, most people, unless they deal with them a lot, like I do, they feel fear. They don't want to come into your business. We would like to come in with a team, and we'll be low-key, but as the officer, I don't know, I'm sorry, I know Chief Brown by how he looks, but I can't see your face. I don't know you. But as you know, that when the, when the, the bad guys, when light is shined upon them, darkness flees. When they know that we come up, I've had in Walmart, a guy come up and he asked me for money for a story, and I said, "Well, why don't you use this story and rattle off about four or five of them?" Because I said, "These were better." And he looks at me and grins, and I explained to him, "But once that," tells him who I am, "But once they know you're there, and if we're there," because their behavior's not going to change until they think differently. We can train them till literally hell freezes over. They're still going to be criminals until their heart changes, their belief has to changes. At the jail, you see the same people that we minister, they're back and forth with the jail. And they will go where they have to go. You can trespass, put these signs up all you want. They'll ignore that. They'll go where they have to go to survive. And what happens, we're seeing a lot more young people, and I can't imagine a young woman that ever, as a child, thought to herself, "I want to grow up, and I want to walk up and down a Newport, Highway 19 and be a prostitute. That's what I want to do when I grow up." Or, "I want to grow up and have no teeth and smoke crack and do what I can to buy beer and live in a tent when it's pouring down raining." A lot of them, they get, reach the point, they're absolutely hopeless. And that's where the faith-based community has to come in. The police cannot be running out every, every time there's a call, "We've got panhandlers out here, you've got more important things to do." But the faith-based community, which I would propose that we work with the police department and the city government, to recruit the faith-based community and to do what we profess that we were told to do. Go out and make disciples and talk to them and give them hope and get them in. And the worst thing that can happen is that we identify them and say, "We can talk them about panhandling, and you know, you're, you continue out here, you're going to be in the back of a cruiser, because you're going to get busted, and this is what's going to happen." Once they know that you're, that they know that they, that they're being spotlighted even by us, that itself will be a deterrent, just like a spotlight is around a dark building at night. I think the police, and I know Chief Bogart, and I really have a lot of respect for him, and over the years, I've seen the things that they've had to put up with. Believe me, I've told people before, I was with the Coalition for the Homeless, there are a lot of them, "I want to slap them in the name of Jesus." And I've told them before, you know, "The way some of them are, if you don't get out of my face, the next person you're going to see is Jesus." You know, I'll say it with a grin, but I'm not naive, because a lot of these guys, some of them can be dangerous people, but there's a way to handle them. But the faith-based community can take the pressure off the police department. See, they've got their hands full, and it's not getting better. It's going to get worse for them. So, well, I see that what we should be So I see that what we should be, and I believe we are, is a solution to the problem and not looking to City Hall or to the police department to come fix things that we help cause and don't want to fix it ourselves. I just hats off to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Priest, 5100 Sunset Boulevard. Don't let the last name fool you. I love these guys to death in here, but I don't send it a pulpit. And here, you know, on it, they preach. I just kind of have the grace of the last name, that's all. You know, we've ran around this issue for years, time and time and time again. The Vice Mayor is correct, okay? This is a regional issue. This is not just a Port Ritchie issue by any stretch of the imagination. I think what these folks behind us are attempting to do is admirable, but they need help. They just need us to stand up with them in order to be able to try to provide what the government can provide, what our PD can provide. But it's also going to take what's happening in New Port Ritchie and the county because we're bordered on both sides. You know, we've moved this thing around, it's like a vicious circle, okay? They go out of our city limits, they get up into the county, get up into Warner Boys Park, et cetera, you know, on it. SO office gets over there, you know, and they push them back down this way and then when they move them down south into Newport in here. And it goes around and around and around in there. And until we are committed to go ahead and work together on a continuing basis, it ain't going to change. And virtually, you spend another five bucks at this, you're wasting five dollars. Until you're ready to go ahead and commit the resources, the time and the effort in order to do it and do it together. I'm for it. I think most of you up there are for it as well. But you need a plan in order to do this. Because if we sit back here and I walked with Nancy the other night, Pastor Lord, you know, on it, the mayor was with us, Vice Mayor was with us in here, you know, on it, did it. And I think it was an admirable thing and I think it opened a lot of eyes as well. But that is not going to change anything. That's going to maybe hopefully help, you know, an individual. And then to me, that's worth it in itself. But that's not going to solve our problem that we continue to have here, that Port Ritchie has, that New Port Ritchie has, that Pasco County has. So my thought process is here, guys, you got it on your agenda in here. If it's a financial stipend that's needed to be set aside in order to go ahead and in Port Ritchie to demonstrate its support and its probability and effort and try to move this process forward, then by all means, I think you should do it. But not in a way that is going to be another patch job. Not in a way that we're just going to move somebody out of the woods over there by Walmart. Not in the way we're just going to move somebody out of the woods over at Limit. I think you need to do it in a way that is going to have some determined success in here. And this is not a battle, okay? This in essence, in its own right, is going to be a war. It's going to be something long and that you're going to have to work at time and time again. And I think at least on a, you know, maybe not a monthly basis, but maybe a monthly basis to begin, but on a quarterly basis, you're going to have to readdress it and see what's happening. See what these gentlemen, any of these individuals back here have been able to do in here. But it's needed. It by all means is needed. Economy's getting a little better, but for most, they've already been hurt so bad, God knows if they'll ever get back on their feet again properly. But whatever we can do to help, we've got issues here. And I think just thinking as far as a, from a city government is concerned, small cities such as ours, I believe we, you know, Port Ritchie, one thing about it, we've opened our hearts time and time again. I think we should do it one more time. But do it this way with a plan of trying to solve the issue, not just to try to move the issue forward to somebody else's, should we say, region of government.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's James Wells. I'm with New Horizons Church and I volunteer at Impact Ministries. I go out with Barry in the woods every Tuesday or almost every Tuesday. We have seen success. I've been doing it for about a year. We have seen success. We've seen lives turned around. One of the greatest things we need to do is, I mean, it's two of us, maybe three or four. We need to unite the churches and the people within the churches to continue on a greater outreach and to, you know, there's scripture in Proverbs 28, it says, "My people perish for lack of vision." And people sitting in the woods and they have no purpose and no vision. And we go out there and we do, we sit, sometimes we've sat for four hours with people. There's a gentleman, Danny Tregaser, he's in prison now. I met him up in Hudson, living behind the post office. Fed him, I took him, talked to him. He said he liked to go fishing. I took him fishing, we went out fishing. He turns around, looks at me, there's a warrant out for my arrest. I go, he checks with the police, there's no warrant. I go to my home, I open up the laptop, typing his name with him, and there's his brother's name. His brother's deceased, Clifford Tregaser, alias Danny. Danny looks at me and says, "That's my warrant." All right? Danny turns around and turns himself in because Christ had changed his life. That's integrity. He went to the police and they said, "There's no warrant." That's integrity. His life was changed. And we've seen men's lives changed. There was a young man today that went and checked himself into a program. We've seen men's lives changed, but we need more. We need unity within the churches to get more people out and train them to minister properly. And we do, we need your help, we need your support. We need whatever resources we could get from you. So I appreciate you all and I thank you. And I was with you all when we walked out Limit Drive. And I'm just telling you, you know, really, everyone in this room could fight all they want. And unless we let the Spirit of God change the hearts of men by ministering to them, by just expressing love to them, they're never going to change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Eugene Gannaway, pastor at Impact Family Ministries. I was sitting there just listening to the conversation and I thought about, like in St. Pete, they have, they took an old jail and they turned it into a homeless shelter. And then they have to send your City of Hope to help the guys that are homeless come in, have a place to stay and then go through programs to do that. And when we deal with homeless in Port Ritchie, we send them to St. Pete or we send them to someplace else that has that. And I, my question is, is there a place that, or land or something that the city's not using maybe that we could, the church could step in and have a program for them to come in, those that are serious, those that are criminals should be in jail, but those that are serious about getting off the street can come in, go through that time and then after that, you know, move up until job and get a place or, you know, roommate or wherever like that. But there's nothing like that in Port Ritchie. There's nothing. So they go behind Walmart, they go behind these places, they get arrested for trespassing, they get their tents slashed and all this kind of stuff and they come back to us and we're like, "Well, we gave you that." And we don't understand why that's happening, they're getting their tents slashed and all that. Instead of them saying, you know, "Get out, take your stuff with you." But if they had a place to go, if there's anything, I don't know what's available in this county, but you know, I don't know if this county had an old jail or some kind of place where the church could come in with some support from the city to be there and say, "Okay, this step, they come in, this amount of time, they sleep here, we get serious, you know, go through treatment, you know, celebrate recovery, so, so on." And then at the end of that whole time, becomes members of society, you know, paying taxes, move back home. We had one guy who was recently homeless that was able to go back to California with his folks when his folks found out he was homeless because of what we're doing at Impact. But there needs to be, I think, you know, spending money just on arresting them is really not the answer. I think if we had a plan to get them help from one point to the next, with the church stepping in, with the city's help, then I think that'd make the best, the best solution for the problem with the homelessness.
Thank you. Last call, anyone else? All right, I'll bring it back to council. And let me just say, as been touched on by a number of you, this is not an easy problem. It's not something that one, one effort, one component is going to fix the problem. It is going to take a community to do it. And remember, when we're talking about an anti-crime initiative, we're not only talking about the homeless, which is one of the problems, but there is prostitution, there's drugs, which also are problems that are every bit as significant in our community in terms of the concerns of our citizens. Focusing and being committed to addressing, improving the safety in the community of assisting people who need help is an important thing for them and for us as a community. But there are some realities here that are important to keep in mind. No matter how hard we try or what we do, there are some people out there that don't want help, that are career criminals or simply choose a different way or are unable to have the tenacity or the discipline to move forward with their lives. But until we as a community and a government do focus on looking at alternatives and assistance, you're not going to make any progress with the problem. So yes, the police can redouble their efforts and target areas that have an increase in crime and arrest individuals. But anybody in law enforcement understands that it's a revolving door. That for the most part, you transport, you arrest and the individual gets released. And where are we? We've made no further progress. Obviously, if any one of us had the answer to this, we'd have tried some different things and we had been on a path to resolving the issues. I think the commitment is extremely important and that we need to, as a government, redouble our efforts to see what can be done. And we need not only a cooperative activity between us and the other governmental entities, but the community. Without us working together, you know, we're just going to have a bit of publicity and effort and goes away and the problem doesn't get solved. So it's not a short-term commitment, it's a long-term commitment. So having heard a variety of input from people on council as well as the audience, my, I think our first work is probably to work jointly with the other governments to see if we can have some concerted effort and then build additionally, us individually as well as the other governmental entities, build some important coalitions and relationships with the churches, with other community groups that, you know, we can work together to try to reach those people that want help, that need help and that, you know, can benefit from direction and help. And then we have really done something. And those, the other part, you know, to the extent that people out there are beyond our ability to help, then the police system ultimately, I mean, as the arrests get more numerous, as the charges get more onerous, then, you know, the sentence gets lengthier and they get off the streets. But to simply say that we as a community need, that we need overtime or whatever, I think that's maybe one part of it. And certainly, I'm willing to make the commitment to whatever we can do. But it's only part of it and I think we have to make the commitment to go the extra mile. Steve, did you have something?
I was just going to say, when we're talking about this collaboration and maybe Nancy remembers as well, because I think Rich Rober had touched on this some time ago. And was this not during a MAP meeting? Wasn't there, in our, going back on those agendas, it's been some time, it's probably been a few years. But I just recall, actually during one of the MAP meetings, one of the leaders in the community that were part of the homeless process actually talking to us at one of the MAP meetings. But, you know, going along with your discussion that, you know, obviously, it's not just, as we've all said before in the other meeting, not just throwing $10,000 to overtime. That's not what we're hearing out here. What we're hearing from these folks is give us some facilities, give us some help in these other ways. And how can we, you know, collaborate and work together with New Port Ritchie, et cetera, to look at some of what's been channeled tonight?
Yeah, I don't want you guys to focus so much on the $10,000. The only reason I put that back on the agenda was just because in case something came up that we did need dollars, it was there and we would be able to vote on it. I think what I'm hearing here is that we need to sit down with the church, New Port Ritchie and City of Port Ritchie for now. We can talk to Pasco County. But right now, I think that we need to keep our group a little small so that we can, it's manageable. So I'll take on the responsibility, set that meeting up. We can find a place to meet. And if we're going to solve this problem, we got to figure out how to do it, put our heads together. And, you know, there's a lot of options out there. We have Rotary Clubs that are raising money for all kinds of people. Could we put a house in New Port Ritchie? Could we put a house in Port Ritchie? Could we put a house in Hudson? Could we put a house in Tarpe, well, not Tarpe Springs, Holiday? You know, I don't know. I don't know. But it's going to take a community to solve this. And I don't think it'd take a lifetime to solve it because there's so many other social issues. But as we talk about all these people, I don't want to forget the fact that we have citizens who get up every day and work really, really hard for what they own in their homes and they have to feel safe in their homes. And so that's another part of cleaning up the streets. Because you can't, I mean, I've gotten a security system now. You know, I'm armed. That's never happened before, you know? Scares me. But, you know, I need to protect myself and so do the other people in the community. So you don't want, you know, I want my, our citizens, as a councilperson, I need to have and know that the citizens feel safe in their homes. And that's where our police come in. So, you know, if we can assist the police with the bad doers and help with the good doers and the ones that really want to get help, then maybe we'll have something going. So I will proceed and set up some type of meeting between the police chief again in New Port Ritchie. We'll find a date, even if it's 30 days out from now, we'll find a date that works for everybody. We'll find a place to meet, whether it be Leonard's Church or a church in New Port Ritchie or whatnot. But I think at that point in time, we'll do it, you know, whatever time benefits everybody. We'll have to exchange some email addresses and things like that. And I'm going to need your help, Leonard.
Right, Nancy, let me know.
Okay. So I think that's the best direction to head in at this point. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for your advice. Just, you know, wish us well.
Okay, what's your pleasure with regard to an allocation?
At this time, I think we just wait on that and, you know, we can always come back to it. Like I said, I just really just threw that out in case, you know, there was a need for it in any way, shape or form. It could have been anything, you know?
Okay.
So we'll look back on that later.
All right, so you're going to spearhead the effort to...
I'm going to set up the next meeting and, you know, I'll work with Leonard and we'll figure out what works for Chief Bogart, what works for our city police. And, I mean, because I'd like to have the City of Port Ritchie's police there also just to kind of get their input, at least for the first meeting if we can. After that, you guys, you know, we'll just let you know what's happening. So we're going to have a massive list of emails so that we can keep in touch and whatnot and at least, you know, to post meetings and things like that. Well, the next meeting's going to be, you know, such and such time. See where we can go with it.
One other thing if I could address, and I think it's important, is that right?
Please come up.
It's just Leonard Lord, Pastor Ray, 1400 Kidd Avenue. We've had, and I have a resolution here and I'm going to go over it with some other pastors, but the city did agree and give us a permit, we're having a Jesus march.
All right, I have that here.
Okay? And we've got some things. But what I'm saying, this is the positive way to actually say, "We're going to stand up that our city's going to be better and it's going to be a march for righteousness and the good thing." And it's not going to be protesting anything. It's really going to be a declaration of what we want the city to do. And so I think it'll be a... And so, I think it'll be a step in the right direction, so hopefully, won't be too long, the next few days, get with the city manager, and hopefully, a resolution, and I would like maybe to get the city behind that, and it'll be a positive input of expressing our love for one another, caring for one another, and as in past, we've had marches against crime and these other marches, this is going to be just another march, just the positive side, which that wasn't negative. And so, just want you to keep that in mind, and we'll be praying about it. We met, matter of fact, this morning for a long time, with a lot of pastors, and the impact of hopefully, just what it can do to encourage people to unite as a city. So, that's our next step, is to have that march together, okay? Just wanted to share that with you, and we'll be getting more along those lines, and any questions, you can get with me, okay?
Yeah, Saturday, June 7th, 10:00 a.m., meet at City of Port Richie City Hall, and then walk to your church at 11:00 a.m.
Right, basically, the agenda is, we're going to have a positive march with some singing as we go, not messing up city ordinances, and then we're going to go out and really have some music and some testifying of people's lives that's been changed, and then we plan to have a celebration, a cookout there together as a city. So, just want to thank them for approving that, and that'll be our next positive step that we're working on, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, God bless you.
All right, let's move on to the next item, which is the resolution, we don't have a number, regarding the Paint Up Fix Up Grant, Mr. O'Neil.
Yes, it is Resolution Number 14-03. That's on the resolution, it's not on the front page.
On the next page.
Yes, this is a follow-up to your action on April 1 to approve an amendment to the Paint Up Fix Up Grant Program, which was approved some years back. It is a resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Port Richie amending the Paint Up Fix Up Grant Program, and as you will recall, we discussed amending the program to allow for matching funding for irrigation system devices that save water, moisture sensors, rain sensors, that would be approved and inspected by the City Development Services Department. It would be a limited amount of funding, not to exceed $5,000 citywide on a matching basis for those applicants that applied and were accepted. It would include those individuals that paid for the materials themselves, as long as they installed it, and it's reimbursed after the system improvements have been made and inspected by the Port Richie Development Services Department. You'll see the revised language that I included here on Page 10, that simply says irrigation system, water conservation devices, as approved by the Port Richie Development Services Department, will be considered eligible for matching grant funding. So, with that, the action recommended is approval of this particular resolution.
Question, is there a limit on the match? We've got limited funds to expend citywide, so if, we have in mind a sensor system or whatever, and the cost?
We didn't have any specifics on that. You could, as a part of your action tonight, limit each individual project. If you decide to do so, I'd place a limit of $250 per installation as a maximum amount that could be approved as matching funding. These devices are not expensive, they're generally $200 or less, if they're installed by a contractor, a total amount would be greater than that, but I envision being able to help quite a few people if indeed they were interested.
All right, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I have a question. No motion.
Pardon me?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
We had chatted about including, in the Paint Up Fix Up, to be able to have homeowners be able to do repairs, let's say on their front door, I mean, I know this is a water system, but we'd also talked about if a homeowner had the ability to install their own windows or their own front doors. We have a section here that provides that, but is it only for this particular...
No, it's for all of the grants.
All the grants, okay.
Any homeowner, if they're a do-it-yourselfer, can apply for matching funding for the material cost, and it's approved contingent upon a satisfactory inspection by the building department.
Okay, for the material costs?
I've always been under the impression that you had to use one of our contractors to, you know, or not one of our contractors, but a contractor that was on the list with the city to take advantage of the Paint Up Fix Up Grant Program.
We have approved those on what's called a homeowner's permit, provided that somebody owns their home. So, if they indeed installed, they have to, of course, do it in accordance with all codes, this also provides for the fact that if somebody purchased these devices and installed it themselves, it can be approved for matching funding contingent upon a satisfactory inspection.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure if it included all of them, okay.
So, the total expenditure from the CRA would be $5,000 for this...
That's correct.
Process, okay. So, if you have, let's just throw a number out there, that, you know, it could be $500, let's say, for these said devices, you know, you've got, you know, basically, X number that could take advantage of this, do we think there would be more than, let's say, 10 people or places? I mean, I'll just say, I know Sand Pebble will, I know, I'm in the townhomes, I know we've got basically four to six sections of townhomes, so the question would be, okay, this maybe covers, these particular devices cover X amount of area, you know, you basically are having it the same, in that a person, and I'm just using Sand Pebble as an example, because number one, I know they're interested, especially in the townhomes, you met with the president in the townhomes there, that they could apply for X number of devices, and you have a $250 matching, would that be one? Would that be, you know where I'm getting, you've got $5,000, you know, it could probably be used quite quickly if you've got, let's say, X number of folks take advantage in, you know, some particular areas, Harbor Point, Harbor Isles, Sand Pebble?
If it's successful, then I would intend to bring it back to you and tell you that it's being taken advantage, not taken advantage of, but being used successfully, and you certainly would have the opportunity to consider increasing the limits. You know, I wouldn't want us to turn people down.
Well, the only reason I say that, too, is that if somebody, in referring to the grant limitations, let's say, no single property will be eligible to receive grant funding any more frequently than once every 24 months, so somebody maybe is more inclined, if they know they've got, you know, X number of areas to cover, they're going to look to cover those areas initially and not have to wait to come back, you know, 24 months later for these particular devices. In other words, they're going to want to, they're going to want to cover it all, I certainly know, for example, Sand Pebble would. You know, would they be purchasing one, or would they be purchasing six?
Well, I'm not real sure until we actually launch this off.
Right.
One thing I would want to add is that I thought this was a way to get it kicked off. I would envision, in the future, a grant application to Swift Mudd, because grant money is available, but it would take us about a year, year and a half to get it.
That's going to be my next question, because you mentioned about Swift Mudd next year, that there may be some funding available.
Yes, we're going to have to apply for it, and this is a way to get it kicked off, and then any other remaining expenses, in my opinion, in the future should be paid for by the utility system. The utility system will be in a position to fund this kind of water conservation program in the future.
You know, and again, just looking back at residential and looking at, you know, multi-site properties like Sand Pebble, it certainly felt that, you know, that there may be somebody, let's say, at, and we've had these folks come in when we've had these irrigation talks, let's say at Harbor Point, somebody in a home has X amount of square footage that they're talking about, and these sensors would go in, you know, I don't know yet, X number of areas, maybe Pat will probably discuss this a little bit, but...
Only one sensor.
One sensor.
What you need is one irrigation system, and one sensor will cover the entire irrigation system.
So, like Sand Pebble, if there's six buildings?
There should be five maintenance units in Sand Pebble, so five units would cover...
Okay, so depending on the number of meters, then, you're kind of correlating what they would have, okay? But, you know, then again, it comes back, you know, would, you know, if there are that many and it correlates with the meter, could that, you know, could that person then look to say, okay, well, we're going to get four of them, so if we've got, you know, $250 matching, you know, you've got $1,000 for four of them, or, you know, $1,250 for five, that hits a $5,000 total pretty quick. So, I'm just throwing it out there.
And again, people are free, simply to do whatever they want with their own sensors without applying for these fix-up funds, so it's an incentive for those people that could be encouraged, and obviously, a first step down the road of looking at other ways to conserve.
I think folks would be very interested, because it's, you know, this is where we were heading, was this conservation effort, and if these are very specific tools that, you know, can address this, and you've got folks using, you know, 50,000 gallons plus, you know, this is a real help for what basically would be a low-cost investment.
Yeah, they may not wait for the grant to be available if they want it now.
Right, right. But, I think that's good, I think, like you said, that kind of warms it up a little bit to see what interest we even have in this right away.
All right, any further discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I'll open it to the public for comment, yes, Mr. Abbott.
Mark Abbott, 7907 Washington Street. The CRA was when we, back in the initial times when it was developed, was trailer parks that were now being demolished, and money to help the streets, such as your last subject. The rich people have irrigation, and they water their lawns, simple things can be done, like use grass from Pasco County, which is Bahia, Argentina, which is, uses a lot less water, can educate them with that. Swift Mudd is a tax base, that they're all paying taxes, you can get money back from Swift Mudd. I think, in my opinion, I'm all for water conservation, but it's the wrong funding source. CRA is to clean up our streets, do some things. We just cleaned a large area up on Washington Street, why not put in some bike paths? Why not give something to the poor side of the city? Why do we always have to address the rich side of the city? Not that they don't pay their higher taxes, but the CRA was when we had the trailer parks. It's based on a percentage. Those trailer parks came in at low value, Sand Pebble came in at high value, you did averaging, you got money. Every other city, it goes to the county. Back to homeless stuff, every county and city, I studied it hard, went out in the woods with these people, if each city and county and organization gives a small percentage based on their population, we could have an area behind Unity Church, which they were going to give, or sell us at one time, and the developer was going to sell us, put in a small campground with 10 or 15, and Newport Richie puts in 30, Zephyr Hills puts in 50. Those are what I think CRA monies are for, are fixing up the poor areas of the city, or figuring out unusual ways to get the drugs that are flowing from Dade City, and, you know, the cracks still flowing from Dade City, the cracks still flowing from downtown Brooksville, the loop in downtown Newport Richie, which is the county where the heavy weapons were flowing in earlier in the year, that's ways to clean up our community, stop this stuff from flowing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
I would just say, I understand what Mark's saying, I know that in the past, we've been a city to spend over a million dollars in a dredging effort with five different engineering companies, you know, that's some use of CRA, too, and I know he's been a previous mayor here, he's well aware of some of those numbers that have gone on. Look, there is X amount of money available, this is a city that, with much blight, I think we've done well, but, you know, we've also had areas that have had 400% increases, and we've had a lot of information and complaints as well, going along with the irrigation, and what we've tried to do in giving back, from a billing effort, we've taken steps forward, that was $12,000 that was credited, basically, so I am hopeful, as Tom has indicated, that the next go-around, that there'll be some other funding, maybe from Swift Mudd, but I do think that this is a small step forward. I don't think it's one we're going to have to repeat, I think there are folks, especially, and I know wealth, and I do point to Sand Pebble, that, you know, those folks had some quite substantial bills when the irrigation went up. If they take advantage of it, that's fine, but there's going to be a limited amount of money available, this being $5,000. I hope folks will take advantage, because I think we really need to look at this conservation effort going forward, and it's a good way to do it. That's why I'm in favor.
Okay. All right, anybody else? All right, we've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Oppose? Nay? All right, it passes. The next item is discussion of Limestone Drive and Waterfront Park Piers, Mr. O'Neil.
Yes, on your agenda and in the packet tonight is a report that was asked for at the last CRA meeting on April 1. Members of the board indicated an interest in getting a cost estimate for construction to repair the Limestone Drive Pier. We previously had one for the Waterfront Park Pier. As you'll see, there is an itemized list of the items on Page 14 that's prepared by Wanamaker Jensen, they're a subconsultant to Wade Trim. I want to emphasize that this is a high-level estimate, and it does include a contingency in here. The estimate sums to $170,500, and is indicative of what you saw in the structural report. The pier is in extremely poor condition and has deteriorated significantly with the concrete pilings and the underpinnings and undersupports of the pier, so it's indicative of the condition that it's in. I'm putting it forward for your discussion and direction on what you want to see on this.
Anyone wishing to speak to this item?
All I can say is, holy pier, that's a lot of money.
It's a figure similar to what we heard for the fishing pier, the same ballpark.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
It seems almost incomprehensible that a small fishing pier off Limestone would cost $170,000 to repair, or even build a new one.
Speaking to that, if we built a new one, it wouldn't cost near that amount, but you keep in mind what it is, it's a bridge that was severed at one point, and it has underpinnings and supports and pilings that were designed to accommodate vehicle traffic, and so what they're talking about is, okay, they've got to go in, they've got to repair those, but truly, if we started from scratch on it out from shore, it wouldn't cost that amount of money.
Well, maybe an option is to then look at demolition and construction of a new one, if that's more cost-effective. And my feeling on the Limestone Pier, as I've expressed before, is certainly that I think it's a pier worth preserving, I think these kinds of things are important to offer to citizens of our community, I think it is one of the amenities that makes this place a wonderful place to live, and I certainly would not want to see us relinquish something, but is it a priority in... But, but is it a priority in terms of funding now? We don't have the money to, to look at this, uh, in terms of a rebuild. But, you know, maybe there's money out there. And, and we, um, as, as we will, as I'll discuss shortly, uh, we're in the process of looking for monies out there to do all kinds of things. So, um, my feeling is we ought to go back to the drawing board probably and look at other options for that pier area rather than this cost.
There may be some, you know, the fact that it's historical, there might be some grant money for a historical, uh, old bridge, pier. You know, just like they did down in St. Pete when, or, uh, you know, when the Skyway Bridge broke.
Right.
I don't know if they got any historical money to do that.
Well, no, because at the time, but I'm just saying, you know, the same thing, I mean.
I mean, that's why they wound up ripping part of it down again, didn't they? And they put a lot of money into reconstructing that.
Right, but I'm wondering if, um, you know, this date's way back, we could look into something like that.
The trouble is with any kind of historical grant, they're looking to, um, a structure in its original shape. I mean, they're not looking for a piece of a bridge that's been turned into a fishing pier.
Well, you know, there may be money and, and wherever we have to attach it to.
There may be.
Let it be.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I guess a question would be if, as you indicated, I mean, obviously for the 170, uh, no one's in favor. We know that, one, this is a historical site. I guess they're certainly not catching fish as they are at the Skyway with the bridge that they have there. But nonetheless, uh, it, it is a great, I think Terry's caught a nice fish there. But nonetheless, um, you know, in looking at what is the cost of demolish? And as you've indicated, the cost of, of, of putting new. Now, as you've mentioned that, what I'm thinking is, you know, where is the timeline in that whole process? In other words, you know, when, when if it isn't going forward, would we have to demolish? In other words, how long, you know, is it, is it standing basically? Uh, and we've, you know, look, we've seen the pictures. I, I brought here what we received last time. And, you know, it, it just, we knew it was ugly then. Uh, it was just a matter of time before it was determined how ugly. And, um, you know, obviously it isn't safe. You know, there's a lot of things that go along with that, you know? How long can we basically leave this there? And, and should a next step be, uh, you know, what is the cost of demolition? And is there any help there? I mean, we basically were, you would say, stuck with this, so to speak. You know, where, where would we be in that timeline, I guess, is what I'm thinking now. Because obviously we're going to see if something is available and, and, and go that route. But, you know, how long do we wait before this really has to, uh, has to come down?
Well, I, I guess in researching this, and I've looked at several documents, there's a question as to whether or not the city actually owns it. Uh, of course, it was constructed by the state of Florida. And, uh, there were some efforts, uh, way back, a long time ago, to give it to the city of Port Ritchie. And I believe it was 1955 where I saw one document where the Port Ritchie City Council turned it down. And so there never has been any formal acceptance of the structure, which you could take to mean that it's still owned by the state or the county. The county maintains all the bridges in the county. Uh, it was the county that tried to give it to the city unsuccessfully. So, um, I guess we could start with a position that if it needs to come down, if it's a threat to navigation and it's unsafe for people, it could be someone else's obligation to bear the expense of demolition on it. And then if the council decided to put a new pier up, I would imagine in the same location, it, it would be less money than that.
Is that something we would, i- is that something we would move forward at this point? Because, you know, first of all, you know, the who and the when, uh, would eventually have to come up. And, you know, are, are there going to be some, you know, legal questions and, and?
Well, I can look to, you know, I can look to the state. And we can bring up the subject of demolition and, uh, and see what could be done.
Because even so, I mean, at a later point, you know, something would, would, I think all of us agree it'd be great to have something there. But if we're faced with, you know, demolishing, um, you know, I would think we would take that initiative forward now. What would we be waiting for?
Yeah, it, it could be an expensive project to demolish it. And I, I don't really think it's fair to the city of Port Ritchie.
No, I agree, certainly not. I agree.
I think at this point, we just, we need to get moving on something here. Um, this, this has like come up 100 times in the last year and, and it's time to do something. So at this point, let's find out, you know, once and for all, you know, who actually owns it? And if we don't own it, ask them to take it down, who, the people that do own it, and, um, and then we can go forward. But at this point, I feel like we're just going in one big circle.
I remind everyone that for as long as, as anybody has lived in this community, the city has, has taken control of this pier. And, you know, Bill Bennett is probably the chief historian, uh, who's been here well over 50 years. And no one else has claimed control of that, uh, of that old bridge. So I'm sure that there is no obstacle in our way from the state or the county or Newport Ritchie or anyone else if we continue to want to do this. So, um, if, if it clarifies things, certainly we could get, um, the acquiescence of, of the other governments if we want to pursue this. And that, that's simply done. I don't think that should hamstring us in any way. With regard to, you know, that may be a precondition for, um, anything we do or want cooperation from the state of Florida, for example, you know? We'll, we'll take future control of this, but we want you to assist us in, in demolishing it or rebuilding it or whatever. But yes, I agree, we ought, we, we've got to move forward. We've, we've beaten this one to death for as long as I can remember. And, um, we built it, we repainted it, we maintained it, we've done things for, we've closed it off. Uh, you know, it, it's ours if I want it.
Yeah, we just have to make a move on it either way, you know, figure out, let's get to the bottom of it.
Well, I, I would suggest that, um, you authorize me to contact the FDOT and talk to them about either demolition or some assistance with the project. Uh, and I'll be happy to do that right away.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Can we get a, um, do we know what we, Pam, do we know, what, what is the balance of the CRA at this point? Do you have that figure?
Yeah, the fund balance as of today is 1.18 million.
Okay.
Okay.
Most of that's appropriated, right?
Anyone from, from the audience want to speak to this?
Mark Abbott, so a little history on the pier over there. Of course, it used to go across and Port Ritchie claimed everything next to Catches as a city park. And they used to have city pride up there and Catches has kind of grown over the area there. The other side, to my recollection, Mr. Sackelson, who rents the property to the gambling boat people on the other side, donated that to the city, which is where the parking spots are, the land. I think when we put the water main underneath the, um, thing there, went down the middle of the row on City of Port Ritchie property and came up on the other side. When we were trying to get rid of the, um, problems over on the pier, people with open containers drinking while there's kids fishing, uh, one of the defense attorneys, uh, used the, uh, technique that this is not owned by the city of Port Ritchie, this is owned by the Department of Transportation in order to get the case thrown out. But there is always lots of tax dollars in revenue for gas taxes, if truly. And I've heard you said that we've been maintaining it. Somebody cares, Pasco, um, a lot of people got together and painted that in cooperation with this city coming out and pressure washing it first and then painting it the next day for three times, if I remember right, cleaning it up. But the, um, I mean, this thing was built for, for trucks and cars. I just can't see why, you know, can't go out and walk on it and put kids on it. They're not that heavy. Doesn't seem that complex. Doesn't seem that complex to bolt up a couple of boards or hire a dock builder and put some aluminum or stainless steel or something. So that's what I know.
Anyone else? All right, um, so we'll leave it in Mr. O'Neil's hands to, to see if he can.
I do have a question, Mayor, before we table, or put this to bed. I'd asked Mr. O'Neil in two previous meetings about getting the piers tested, the concrete and the metal inside them. Now, the county calls this integrity testing. It's done on concrete piers that support any type of bridges. Uh, it is standard practice now. I just, I mean, talk about, we've talked this thing to death and carried this on for years. I remember Mr. Bennett over five years ago standing at that pony and asking who owned it? Because he had questions about the parking at Whiskey River and everything else. And today we sit here and we still don't have an answer to who owns the pier. Just, I can't believe that we can have gone this far and we still don't have an answer. But we're talking and we're spending money with Wade Trim getting estimates when I don't even know if that pier will be held up by the supporting piers below it. Now, as I read this thing, it says destructive testing should be conducted on all existing piers in the form of concrete core sampling and determine existing concrete strength. Carbonation depth to provide a diagnostic baseline for potential corrosion of the reinforcing steel. If the concrete piers are found to be adequate, then leveling of the piers and potential reframing with wood members would be the most economical choice for rebuilding. Well, we don't know where those piers are. We don't know anything about them because we didn't get them checked. So as far as I'm concerned, this Wade Trim thing is, is just a figure and it doesn't hold any water for me. If those piers have to be replaced, taken out and re, and put back in, it's going to change this whole dynamic. And so, yes, first of all, I say for once and for all, let, please, let's find out who owns Limestone Pier before we go anywhere. And then let's start, if it is ours and we're going to do this project, let's start at the base of those piers and find out what's going on. And then let's find out what it's going to cost. And let's talk about how we're going to build that, what kind of framing we're going to use and what kind of construction we're going to use. This is very lovely, but it really doesn't hold any water for me. I don't, I can't put, uh, any facts together with this because I don't know what I'm building on. And if you don't have those piers, it's going to be very expensive to replace them. They have to be taken out and then DOT and everybody else gets involved in this project. So it's going to be a lot bigger than we thought. So yes, by all means, let's look and find out and please God, let's have an answer by the next time we meet with CRA over who owns this pier. It's high time we found out. It's been in our city for years. People have been talking about it for years, talking about the ownership, talking about property. I remember Mr. Bennett talking about there were outhouses or something out there that weren't even on the property, that were somebody else's property. I mean, this question has been out there for years. I think it's high time we find out who has it, what we have, and then we can start moving on this. But, uh, those piers, if we're going to do this project, have to be checked first.
Okay, I think the first task, Mr. O'Neil, is simply to contact, um, DOT and/or whoever, what other, whatever other governmental entity, um, claims an ownership right in this and, uh, and see what the options are and then we can move forward.
I will do that.
If, um, you know, if you've gone through historic governmental records, whether it's the cities or the counties or the states, you come to the realization quite rapidly that the record keeping and the records from decades ago is less than adequate. And people simply don't know. The, the records aren't there. All right, one additional item, uh, and you have in front of you a letter, uh, from Fred Fox Enterprises Incorporated regarding a proposal for, um, engagement for a grant proposal.
Point of order, Mayor, if I may. Uh, this was not agendaed.
I understand it's not.
Not noticed, and I don't think it's appropriate to talk about. I think we should put it on the next agenda.
I am asking for this council to, uh, take this as an emergency agenda item. And, uh, I need a, a motion for that. And let me just speak to it very briefly. We are, um, making concerted effort to request some grants from the Restore Act, um, for a number of programs in the city. Time is of the essence for this work to be done. We've got an early June deadline for the submission. If, uh, I'm asking as an emergency basis and, um, for, um, this to be, um, addressed at this meeting, if it is your desire not to do so. And we've checked with, um, Mr. Public with regard to the procedural adequacy of this. And, uh, and his advice is that we can proceed with it. But if you choose not to, then I will call a special meeting of the CRA so that we can address this because we can't wait until the next regular meeting to address this with, um, the deadline in early June. So, uh, if somebody wants to make a motion or you want to discuss this, uh, I would request that we do so.
I want to discuss exactly, exactly what it is. So, so basically this is, this is, um, these are, these amounts are all amounts that.
Let me see if I can help.
Apply for a grant.
Uh, let me see if I can help you a little bit with the background. The city has, uh, applied for a, um, a grant monies from the, um, Restore Act Committee for improvements in the waterfront park. There was an early presentation and at the suggestion of members of that committee, they suggested that the city supplement the proposal to, to enlarge it to include other areas, um, for application. Mr. Fox has previously written grants for this city. I think he did it on the parking garage and maybe some other, um, other areas. The, um, the huge benefit to the city of Mr. Fox is that he doesn't, he gets paid if we get a grant. Otherwise, he does not get paid. So we, as a city, do not have to provide him or pay him for the grant proposal. And, um, and, and if we are, um, successful, then he will get paid. And there is a three-part grant proposal that we're trying to put together before a early June meeting of the, um, of the committee, the local, um, committee. And that is for redevelopment of the waterfront park, for dredging of the canals and, uh, portions of the river. And, uh, for, um, some development in the waterfront district. And the proposal, um, that, um, and we have met with him, Mr. O'Neil, um, and myself, Ms. Martinez and Mr. Priest have all met with him, uh, in an effort to see what assistance we could get out there to bolster our efforts to get some grant monies. And so, um, what's your pleasure?
Well, as, as you've indicated then, so first, this was, uh, the information coming forward, obviously, was to prepare this as three separate applications. That came first, uh, in that process when we look at how these are actually, uh, project descriptions and the estimated, uh, amount requested. And I guess my, my second question would be, this obviously was something that needed to go outside to a Fred Fox because we obviously don't have the staff or maybe not the expertise as well. as well when we look at these three individual efforts. But I don't know if Jocelyn wants to say a few words on this because you were part of the process, but I know in, she can if she wants. Would you like to?
Yeah, I want to hear what you have to say.
Well, I mean, it's easy to put these down, it's not so easy to get, but certainly, you know, it's a move forward.
Right, and as the mayor explained, we met with the Restore Act Committee and submitted one application for the waterfront park redevelopment and they suggested that we expand our proposal to include the components that you see on the proposal that you have. And we will be presenting our new application to them on June 5th. So we are looking for help from someone with a little more expertise in grant writing than any of us have to try to provide the best possible application to the Restore Act Committee in, in early June.
There's a real opportunity for, for this city to get grant monies for important projects that we cannot simply afford to do otherwise. We, I had, don't have the expertise, the staff to put together the kind of grant proposal that, that would put us in a position, the best position to get us monies.
Do we need a motion or do we just need a consensus then in moving forward with these proposal, grant?
Do you need a motion and a second to declare this an emergency item? And then you could take a vote on it, on whether or not to approve the proposal.
My motion to approve it.
To, to declare this an emergency matter for the agenda?
Yeah, I mean, dredging's important to this city and, and if there's an opportunity for us to get grant money, why hold it back at this point? I mean, you know, we can come back another night, either or, doesn't matter, but...
And again, this information came to us today in terms of, of the concrete written proposal.
And I'll second.
Okay, so to declare this as an emerging, emergency matter, okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, I'll open it to the public for any comment they may have.
Jim Priest, 5100 Sunset Millard, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, this, if you ever had a no-brainer sitting in front of you, this would be it, okay? We, you circle around these projects time and time and time again, there is no other money to get them done, okay? You have an opportunity here, you have an individual that is not going to charge you for this unless you get your money, okay? To sit back and not move on this would be catastrophic.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second to declare this an emergency agenda matter. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Madam Mayor, it's, as a point of, point of, as a point, my understanding is, is that in order to anything, in order for anything to be considered an emergency, there has to be immediate threat to life, limb, or property. My understanding is also that anything that is passed as an emergency motion needs to be passed by a supermajority.
Okay. If, if, in, in light of those concerns, certainly we want to do everything that is, that is procedurally correct and prudent. And, and so if that's the feeling, then we need to call a special meeting of the CRA. What's your schedule for tomorrow?
Well, that also...
Pardon me?
That's enough time to call a special meeting?
Twenty-four hours, I can, I can call a, a special meeting in 24 hours.
We don't have the attorney here, obviously, to answer the supermajority, which, which is unfortunate because, you know, hi, hi, his expertise obviously is needed. I understand what Bill is suggesting, but, you know, it's, it's, you know, it is what it is, but, you know, certainly it is based on a timing. I don't know, I just think he would follow, you know, along and we have a three to two vote, but we're obviously not going to get him on the phone on it. I guess the route that we would have to take is, is a 24-hour. I can only say that I'm working in Ocala, my next two days, I will probably put in over lord knows how many hours. I would not be able to make it unless we want to meet here on a Friday or a Saturday. I'm just going to throw that out there. I'm just too, I've just got too much going on, so I wish this three to two go forward because obviously as we've had Jim Priest say, this really is a no-brainer, guys. It's a no-brainer.
I would say it's railroaded shenanigans and I'm going to call it as it is. I don't know why we weren't notified there was going to be some type of meeting here and I questioned Mr. Priest present at this meeting. I don't understand any of this and all of a sudden it's shoved down our throat. I have a, I have a big problem with this.
Well, I said this just came in and obviously, obviously, I don't know.
We couldn't even get an email saying, hey, I've got a guy, I'm going to, you know, nothing.
Yeah, I haven't checked the email, to be honest with you.
I get this in an email today and it's put on my desk tonight and they expect me to vote on it. This city has really gone around the corner anymore.
But I mean, if we've got a June...
I wonder if people are beginning to question.
If we've got a June 1st timeframe, you know, that this has to be submitted June 1st.
Correct.
You know, then there's not much time, you know. I, you know, I can see why that would be then called and for us to move this forward. You know, we're not going to get any money if we don't apply.
All right.
Anyway.
We had a three to two vote in favor of declaring this an emergency agenda item.
I would say we'd have to honor and...
Pardon me?
Wouldn't we have to honor that and bring that to the attorney that'd be non-value?
And... So that the, the motion passes to declare it an emergency for addressing us, addressing it at this meeting, given the, the time constraints. And so if that's, that being the case, then let's move on to considering the merits of this item this evening. So what I need now is a motion to author, or a motion to approve Mr. Fox's proposal to assist us in these grant proposals so that we can have the information for presentation in front of the Restore Act Committee.
Motion to approve?
Huh? Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? It fails for a lack of second and so we go back to, I, I will call a special meeting. I am not available on Friday. You're not available on the next two days, is that correct?
Be tough, but Monday? I don't know, Monday?
Well, we have a regular meeting Tuesday.
Yeah, we have a regular meeting Tuesday. Can it be Monday? I'd like to give a time for the Wednesday or Thursday, but, you know, it'd be a chance, you know, with, with patients that I work with, you know, sometimes it can get quite late, so...
I have, I have commitments both Wednesday night and Thursday night for work I can't even get out of, ever, no way.
Well, and how about Friday night, I'm not available. I would be earlier on Friday, but, but you're not available. Folks, this is, I can't tell you how important this is for, for the city. We're looking at a proposal that amounts to $12 million that we could get in, in dollars from the federal government for projects that are deemed to be significant to our community, including dredging, including potentially a garage at the waterfront district and redevelopment of the city's waterfront park. It is of extreme urgency that we address this as quickly as we can and if we don't, then we have just missed one of the opportunities that will be very hard to come by in the future.
Saturday, Monday?
So, so my suggestion is we do this as quickly as we can and if you're all available Saturday, then let's set a time.
I'm available, how about early Saturday?
I'm available later. Hold on a second, I got a question. Is this, is this part of BP funding?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know how much of an emergency that is because I've just been recently looking into, I just saw the report on, on 60 Minutes recently, or...
We have a deadline. We have a deadline for presentation.
Saturday morning, anybody? Monday? Let's throw some days out here.
I don't have my book in front of me. I think Monday would be okay.
Monday evening? Any good?
I'd, I'd rather not wait till Monday. I'd rather get it as the first available time and, you know, I can unilaterally set it, set it, but I, I want everybody's schedule to be accommodated and to be present so that we can have input on this. So, are you avai, are you available on Saturday?
Saturday afternoon.
Saturday afternoon?
If I have to be, I mean...
Is that, is Saturday afternoon good?
If I have to be too, yeah. We got to get it done.
I see, you know, that, that gives several extra days to, for the grant writer to, to move forward and... So what...
I mean, what's going to get done on Saturday and Sunday? If we meet Saturday, nothing will get done till Monday anyway, correct?
He's, he's, Nancy, we have a deadline of less than a month away. Every day is significant to get this thing together and back. It's, it's, it's a major project to do it with the kind of information he's got to digest and, and put in a format, so... Saturday afternoon at 2:00?
I'm fine.
Is that okay with it? You want it earlier? It makes no difference to me.
I'd love it early, but Nancy says she can't make it. I'd be here at 7:00 AM on Saturday. I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'd, I'd probably much rather do that early, but if you're committed, is, is your committal time early morning or can, can we do an 8:00?
I could do 8:00, but I got to be out of here in that time.
I don't think it's going to take that long. I wouldn't think. 8:00 AM Saturday? I'm available. Now Nancy's available, how about the rest of you?
It's fine with me.
What time?
Okay, 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM?
8:00 AM Saturday. We're going to have a special meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency for the purpose of considering the proposal for grant writing services of Mr. Fred Fox.
Got it.
All right.
In the meantime, is there any copies of any kind of contract or anything that he has given us that says, nothing more than this?
This is it. All right. Is there anything further before we adjourn? All right, seeing nothing, then we stand adjourned.
Thank you.